Another round of applause for that video.
The children are still here that just gave the program.
I think they got a little nervous and forgot to introduce themselves.
I just want to tell them something, I enjoyed it. I want a show of hands up here as we count there.
That brings back a lot of memories. I graduated in seventy-nine, you graduated in now. Not to tell my age, I graduated early.
And I'm not going to tell when I did.
Good evening everyone and welcome to this regular meeting of Floyd County Board of Education. This being November the twenty-eighth with McDowell Elementary School. I want to thank all of you for being here. Let's the record show that all board members are present except Dr. Chandler and she had to be out of town and couldn't be with us. We're going to try to move along as quickly as possible this evening. I know that a lot of you have had a hard day and you've got to get right back at it in the morning. So we're going to move along pretty quickly. Anyone that would like to address the board, please sign the clipboard up front. It's up here on the table and we'll get to that shortly. Everybody hear me? Are we good in the back? Can you hear? Check, one, two, check, check. A little better? At this time, I would ask that we have a moment of individual silent reflection to reflect on why we're here. Thank you. Dr. Webb, the adoption of the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's no recommendations to change the agenda as presented.
And a motion approved?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
No second.
Any discussion? Any opposed? So moved. That brings us to item two on the agenda, which is spotlight. And welcome Pam.
I would also like to thank the kids for the video. I am also a McDowell daredevil and I look forward to the new school, but you know, there's still that little bit of nostalgia. Tonight, we are going to recognize some students, some teachers, and an entire school. These first young ladies, last month, I didn't know what to do when they weren't, I mean, month before last, September. They always come to the September board meeting, but they couldn't because they had a game. So then we were going to do it the October board meeting and they had another game. But we recognize these young ladies every year and they have a strong tradition of winning. So tonight, we're going to actually recognize them for two different championships. The Allen Central High School volleyball team is the fifteenth region All-A champs and they are also the fifteenth region champs. And I believe this is over a decade they have been these champions. Thank you ladies. Next up, I'm also excited to announce that we have four new national board certified teachers in our district. And what's great is they're from all different schools. So everybody is getting more and more involved in becoming accomplished teachers. And we're hoping to do some more interesting things with that in the near future. First off, we would like to congratulate from Prestonsburg Elementary School, Michelle Brad. Michelle, I'd like for you to stay up here if you would and we're going to picture of all of you with the board members. Next up, we have Ms. Mary Sloan from South Floyd. Next, Ms. Susan Tackett from Osborn Elementary. And last but certainly not least, we have Ms. Tina Williams from Allen Elementary. If all the board members would please come and take a picture with our new national board certified teachers. So we have a history with our volleyball team. We have, we are developing a history with national board certified teachers. And now we are going to recognize, this will be our third school in the district who has become a national Title I distinguished school. And that would be Betsy Lane Elementary. Their elementary in the middle is in the top five in the state and they have made tremendous gains in the last couple of years. Again, I wish all the board members would come up and take a picture. Rhonda, Linda. And again, we're saying over and over that hard work pays off. Thank you.
That brings us to the report on student work, McDowell Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I know what Pam means by the bittersweetness. I feel a little outnumbered. I've been an old Where I Trojan, so. Bittersweet. Before we begin our presentation though, Dr. Webb, at our DLP meetings, he generally has a little session where he asks us a little good news that people share. So before we actually begin the session, I wanted to, just to let everybody know that seven thirty-eight this morning, Rob and I were blessed with our fourth grandbaby, baby Eras. McDowell is categorized as a distinguished school. A little about our demographics here, we have two hundred and fifty-nine including head start. Our attendance, ninety-seven point oh nine, that's as of the fourth of November. I think it's pretty close to that as of today. I think we're ninety-seven point oh two today. And proud to say, I think we're ninety-nine point oh one today or ninety-nine point one. Oh, ninety-nine point three, so they bird dog somebody in, so good job. We have eighty-five percent free and reduced lunch and fifteen point nine percent special needs. Our next generation achievement, we had an achievement score of ninety-two point six. We do list some strategies to improve, and that's to eliminate the number of students scoring at the novice level. Analyze and use whole group and individual student data from ThinkLink and K-Prep. Continue instructional focus on PLC teams. Additional focus on RTI program. And intentional focus on our differentiated instruction and rigor levels. The next generation gap, we had a gap score of seventy-four point eight. And some of the things that we have here, social studies, ninety-five point eight proficient distinguished. Our language is eighty-three point three proficient distinguished. Writing fifty-eight point three. Reading of seventy-seven point nine. And math of sixty-one point six proficient distinguished. So our immediate goal is to address reading, math, and writing. Our next generation growth, we had a growth score of sixty-eight point two this year. And we're going to promote growth by continuing monitoring student performance using multiple and ongoing assessment data. To meet individual student needs through differentiated instruction, flexible grouping and scheduling. Utilizing resources and technology promoting program involvement and increasing student attendance. Our next college career and, or college career readiness. To establish quality PL and career studies program. School-wide career day, a variety of field trips and guest speakers. Partner with a family resource to promote awareness. College and career readiness walls in each building and a school-wide student interest inventories. Our next generation graduation rate. McDowell will continue to foster a successful and safe environment. This will increase the probability of developing goal-oriented students who will strive to become high school graduates. Our next generation program reviews. School-wide activities and instructional strategies to address all program review needs. A program review team consisting of four teachers, leads, and administration. And a monitoring system that addresses all program review demonstrators. Some of our achievements, we are a distinguished school like we said. We had an overall reading score of one hundred. Overall language mechanic score of one hundred. Social studies score of one hundred. And the highest performance on the twenty-sixteen standard, or Stanford Gem Assessment. A second grade scored at the seven point four grade equivalency, so very proud of that. We entertain any questions you may have? Oh, you weren't quick, now did you?
That was quick. Any questions or comments from board?
Thank you. Thank, thank the board for allowing me that opportunity. I really enjoyed it.
Great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Brings us to item three on the agenda, which is community comments to the Board of Education. Are there any students that would like to address the board? Parents, PTA, PTOs. SPDM councils. Classified employees. Certified employees, FCEA. Welcome, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Going along with the theme of the night, I taught here for six years. And my lovely wife Brenda Gay Hartwicker went to grade school, high school, and was an aide here for quite a few years also. So we had some roots here also. For quite a few years, we had a very lovely lady named Vicki Pack who worked with FCEA. And every year until her retirement, she would always bring up that she wanted to do something for the Christmas Through the Eyes of a Child program. So we wanted to continue that this year. And we would like to donate one hundred dollars from Floyd County Education Association to the Christmas Through the Eyes of a Child program.
Thank you. Thank you, Sharon. Principal Association. Members of the Board of Education. That brings to public comment. And we have signed up this evening Nicholas Stevens. Nicholas Stevens. Come on up, have a seat. Welcome.
My name is Nicholas Stevens. I'm from Betsy Lane High School. I'm here today to address a problem in the decision of what can and cannot be used in the image of senior pictures. I feel that seniors should be allowed, that the seniors to leave a legacy for themselves. The rules that a student cannot have an impression in their photo is wrong in my opinion. And most of the community in the state of Floyd County High School agrees with me. With over two hundred likes and two hundred shares on a Facebook post of this issue that I posted, many people feel the way I do and believe. And I believe even more further that I have a much larger portion of the community agree with me. And previous hanging students have been featured with items such as athletic gear and other items that mean something to them, expressing who they truly are. This year, like in the year, we were enthroning students because they have nothing in their photos but themselves. This comes after many students have paid hundreds, even thousands of dollars on professional pictures taken for an interview. Dozens of photos have been rejected due to this rule. They were causing no harm, just to be able to leave a legacy of who they were in their photo. I believe this rule should be changed so that students can express themselves. I believe my picture should be allowed because it's a clear image of me. There is no expression in my face. There is both in my photograph that embodies my passion and the sport that I play. I hunt because it's part of my heritage of who I am. I also hope my bow can be used in my photograph because it's a whip. I found this to be a wrong reason, knowing that archery is a sanctioned sport in across Floyd County. And the participants of this sport are pictured with their bows in places in the school landing. And in schools across the county, seniors are pictured with sports equipment in their class photos. And have been for many years. I review multiple handles. These photographs show part of who those people are, not just a bunch of stables in their family. I feel these photos are very valuable part of hanging, showing a legacy of these individuals. And I don't see why my sports should be in the tree any different. I feel very strongly that these rules should be reviewed or reviewed and changed. Also, I feel important that students have a stronger say in names of this nation. I appreciate the time you've given to help figure it out later.
Thank you, thank you Nicholas.
I have a copy of the Facebook post and.
That'll be fine, if you want to bring that up. And just to let you know that we, we do hear your concerns and we will respond to you within just a few days addressing those, okay? Thank you for coming. We don't have anyone else signed up to speak this evening. Is there anyone that I've missed? I've been known to do that. Thank you. That brings us to item four on the agenda. Action or special reports. Four A is to receive the attendance. And health aid service report. Do we have any questions or comments on that report?
I would comment.
Okay.
On the attendance of certified teachers. One of the schools had below, actually it was eighty-six percent for their certified teachers. If we set a standard and we want students in school. That eighty-six percent falls below the ninety percent that we set ten years ago, you know, that we wanted to achieve. So unless there's been an outbreak of flu, something major happened, I just feel like eighty-six percent is just not acceptable. We can't expect a school to, to advance if the teachers aren't there. Just my thoughts.
Mr. Chair, if I could make several comments about that?
Go for it.
The, I'm just trying to check here. When we, any school that finishes the month under ninety percent staff, we always notify that school to try to improve their staff attendance. One of the things we get into with staff, just being very honest and open here, is that they're given days. And as long as they have excuses, then they're allowed to take those days. Your point is very, very well taken. We've worked very, very hard in this school district to get attendance up because we really believe, and I think we have data to support that in our county, that kids can't learn if they're not in school. And your point is excellent. If we come to school and we have substitutes who do a good job, but it's very, very difficult. It makes for a very difficult situation. So we do address any school that goes below ninety monthly with that principal and ask him to address how their staff.
Okay, can you let us know what that school says?
Absolutely.
Any other comments on four A? Motion, motion received. Any discussion? Any opposed? So moved. Four B is to receive the athletic and academic attendance report. Questions or comments on that report? Motion received. Motion to adjourn. Second, Rhonda, any discussion? Any opposed? So moved. Brings us to item five and five A is to receive the report of the superintendent. Any questions or comments on his report? Motion received. Is there a second? Any discussion? Any opposed? So moved. Five B is to receive the utility report from McDowell Elementary School. Questions or comments on the report? Here none, we need a motion received. Is there a second?
No second.
Any discussion? Any opposed? So moved. Five C is to receive the two thousand sixteen financial audit report. And we have.
Good evening.
Welcome.
I appreciate again allowing our firm to audit the school district. We appreciate it very much. We enjoy coming down here. We have great staff, great people to work with. Again, we appreciate that. We've had a lot of changes over the past few years. Mr. Wyerman would attest to that. We had the school activity fund and the school district activity fund differentiation. We had the net pension liability recorded for the county retirement system. Remember, we talked about that last year. And the government-wide financial statements. This year's no exception. We've got what they call a uniform guidance, which is basically a change in federal audit standards. It changes a little bit of the burger vision here. If you actually see that word, you'll see a little bit of changes there. Mainly on our end, not as much on the district. Give everybody a break here, so. There was changes in significant takes the last two or three years. So we have paid, appreciate the very hard work and making all those transitions possible. I delivered three documents, which you got electronically. We got the audit report, management letter, we got a letter to the board, we call it. That's required communication by general accepted auditing standards. So there's nothing I need to point out about that letter, just read through it. Our responsibility is to audit the financial statements and give you the feminine on the financial statements and make sure they're not materially misstated due to error whether intentional or unintentional. During the course of our audit, we come across a significant deficiency in internal control compliance. We'll bring that attention to the district and actually establish a corrective action plan. The management letter that is actually to management that they shared with you all. Basically immaterial non-compliance items, they all go with the school activity counts. It continues to be the highest audit risk from our standard, the way we audit. We just want to bring down prominence and keep informed and continued improvement at the school level, which they do every year. Mr. Wyerman gives a lot of training and he's on top of that. And so they do an excellent job at the schools. As for the report for the Floyd County School District, I have absolutely no problem whatsoever with the school district audit report. Excellent audit report. And absolutely no issues. Led by Dr. Webb and Mr. Wyerman is an excellent, which you all have come to understand. Does an excellent job with his staff. They're very cordial, very voluntary with their information. And as well as coordinators within the district office, on down to the school personnel. So absolutely no problem whatsoever with the audit. Excellent, excellent job. Enjoy coming up here, working with subjects and people. One of them sitting over here monitoring, too, does a good job too. Everybody in the, in the finance staff does an excellent job. So we appreciate the opportunity to work with people like them. That's all the comments I really had at this time. If you all have any comments or questions for me and you're willing to answer us.
Our finance department does a great job.
Glad to hear it all, Rhonda.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. In case anyone didn't hear, the audit report was great. We need motion received.
I make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any opposed? So moved. Five D is to receive construction manager and architect progress report.
Um, no. Mr. Chair, I would like to share just a couple of comments. The new school, everything is going well. Stays on or actually better than projected schedule. Our project at Martin, that the Corps of Engineers is actually building for us, is moving. Plugging's going in, foundation's poured, it's really starting to pick up. The Betsy Lane High School Gymnasium Phase Two Innovation Edition is actually, will be put in the papers on Wednesday, Matt? Wednesday, Friday, something?
The eleventh, or the thirtieth, yes.
Thirtieth and will be, bids will be open on the twentieth of December. So we'll get that moving shortly. So all three of our projects are moving. So appreciate the board for doing these great things for our kids.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Need a motion received, that report, 5D.
I'll make the motion.
Motion, Melinda. You got a second?
I'll say it.
Second, Maronda. Any discussion? Any opposed? So moved. I'd ask the board members to take a look at consent agenda. Should be items 6A through 6V. 6A through 6P, see if there's any items that we need to pull for discussion.
My computer's all red and yellow.
I thought you had one, didn't you? You had one you wanted to pull.
I thought it was P. It is.
6E?
P.
P.
P isn't Paul.
Anyone else have anything we need to pull for discussion? That brings us to 6P, which is to consider an approved change order 002 and 003 for Floyd County High School Water and Sanitation Extension.
I just saw more information on the change order.
If I can get it open, I'll tell you exactly what it is. I know we had, there was a few things with the water sanitation. I think it was a fairly small amount of money, considering the size of the project. One of the things was, when you're going up the hill to where the tank is up on top, the ditch to the left of that road, there was nothing in the process to put large gravel in that ditch, and it led to a large concern about washing out that road. So that is one of the changes. That's the biggest amount on there. And then a couple, the smaller ones were a change in some kind of equipment that actually had to be, had to be changed to be processed. But I can tell you specifically, if I can just open. Where's your gun? I can't see it. I'm trying to zoom out. It's probably... Ah! I can't see that.[1627.32][1627.32][laughter]
I want to see it.
Yeah. Take that, you want to do that.
See, neither that really explains why.
The, and then once again, I can get you, I don't think this is time pressing at all. If you want additional...
No, if it has to do with the drainage and the road, then worry about it. If it washes away, that's fine.
And the blowoffs, and I'm way out of my field here, but I did hear the conversation. They had to change the blowoffs or add blowoffs or something to the system. But the largest piece of this, for about $12,000 I think, was the rock all the way down that side of the hill to keep the road from washing out.
Okay.
That was recommended by the construction manager, by our maintenance director, and we asked him to do that. I had a graduate one who asked to do that, to make sure that road wouldn't wash out down the road.
I'm just, when I ran through that, I just couldn't understand any of it as to why.
Yeah, well, it's not specific enough yet.
Yeah, okay. I'm good.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? We need a motion to approve items 6A through 6V.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, it's a second.
I'll say it.
Second, Maronda. Any discussion? Any opposed? So moved. We need an executive session this evening? That's it? We do not need an executive session this evening. We need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
We'll motion to adjourn. Please adjourn. Thank you.